Kind of give you the lay down of, you know, how did we do this year versus last year? From both a long-term perspective and short-term perspective. It's, you know, it's really, if I were to recommend anything, you know, that would be a section that could give you some real good information for your eighteen nineteen year. You know, first and foremost, what our responsibility is to provide an opinion. And the opinion is whether or not the numbers and all of the disclosures which are significant within this document are stated in accordance with generally some of the accounting principles. And we're providing a clean, unmodified opinion with no exceptions, which is the highest level of assurance that we can provide in the city. And so, that's what they're shot at for, congratulations. All right? There's also a report in here that's more towards the back, it's all the way back to page seventy fifty, seventy three. And this report is required because we're a municipality in New York State. They, whenever there's an audit conducted, they want the audit to be conducted in accordance with government audit standards. Okay? Basically, what that means is, we as an audit firm have to have certain experience and education to be able to perform municipal type audits. That's a big part of an audit in accordance with government audit standards. In addition, during the course of the audit, if we identify any internal control weaknesses, we're not, we didn't come in to do a forensic audit, we didn't come in to do an internal control audit. Our audit is to provide an opinion on the numbers and disclosures. But if we identify any weaknesses in your control during the course of everything that we look at, we have to identify that in this what we call yellow book report. Okay? And we have three items that we include within this section of the audit. There are really three items that the council has seen the last two years. The first one is a pretty typical comment. It's, we call it preparation of the financial statement. So, we play our role in helping the city put together this hundred-page document. Okay? We do that by knowing what's required as far as some of those disclosures that I talked about. And then also, a lot of how the city reports is more on a cash basis throughout the year. And then once a year, we're required, or year required, is a report on a modified accrual basis and full accrual basis. And we provide assistance in providing what's called annual entries and adjustments to kind of take it from the cash basis to the accrual modified accrual basis. Okay? Just for your information, we did have a pretty significant entry this year related to some money that was received by the city a couple of years ago that was designated as a loan, and it was EFC money related to the sewer project, that upon looking at further information, it was actually grant dollars that we had received. So, we made an adjustment to basically lower your long-term debt and increase your equity. And I'll point that out when we get to the draft page, but that was one of the adjustments that we made during the current year. Okay? The second item is really a two-pronged item. It's, we call it general ledger capital projects. The general ledger piece of it, so again, you report on a cash basis throughout the year, but if you have some, like your water fund, your sewer fund, well, they have receivables on an ongoing basis. And so, you know, if for some reason that receivable wasn't recorded the way it should be on a monthly basis, that would mean some of the revenue that you're reporting wouldn't be accurate during the course of the year until the end of the year when we did the audit. Okay? So, the part where we say reconciliation of general ledger, we're kind of saying, you know, periodically throughout the year, some of the assets and liabilities that you have would be worthwhile, you know, ensuring that those balances are still applicable throughout the year. Because if they're not, it means either revenue or expense will have to be adjusted. Okay? And that would be made during the year rather than at year end when we perform the audit. Okay? The capital project piece of that in the finding number two is that you have like two modules where you report throughout the year for your capital project. One is on Excel, like a database spreadsheet, and the other one is within your accounting software, Inco. And, you know, typically, when we come out to do the audit, those two reporting mechanisms need adjustments to get them to be available. And so, the council is, again, reconciled to ensure that they're reported consistently on a, on a monthly, on a year basis. Okay? The last comment really relates to that litigation that happened a couple of years ago. And we kind of recommended that there should be policies that are in place. I think we identified four policies. One, communication of any threatening litigation to the council and developing a policy ahead of that. The second one was a policy and change orders. When there's a change order, who should approve the change order? Should it be the mayor for certain levels? And then if it's over a certain level, we should bring it to the council. We had a recommendation for a policy funded versus actual information. And I think the last item was the project financing, how the capital project was financing. And so, of those four policies, I think currently, you've adopted the first one related to litigation. And it sounds like on an ongoing basis, the status of any litigation is being brought to the, to the council's attention as to what the status is, which is really what the intention of the policy is. So, we're just, again, recommending maybe to look at the other three policies and get those in place as well.
I guess, we never finalized those, because I know we talked about the other three before, but I guess we never, the council never finalized those, probably recollecting or bill? We were talking about different, like, capital projects.
I think a lot of informal discussion.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that we actually have.
I think we did.
Do you guys remember?
I thought, yeah, I thought we sent it to committee to hold it.
I provided a resolution during the audit that included the two of the policies that were the changes.
So, we?
We did two.
We have, we have two? We, because I thought we had a capital project policy.
Checklist.
Change order, change.
We have a change order, do we not?
Yeah, there was one.
We had a lot of discussion. And at the time, we were waiting for, actually, Bob was not in on one discussion, and we were waiting for his, what, on the change orders.
Yeah, okay. All right. We can circle back on that.
Yeah, I think you had one that you drafted out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
We missed the date on the homework apparently.
That's really the items that were written in your attention with respect in, so we missed this. We didn't note any instances where you didn't comply with the laws or regulations. Okay?
Quick question, David. Is it recommended that, and I know, let me, let me rephrase that. Do most municipalities use the cash basis?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Throughout the year, almost all of them.
Okay.
Except for, I would say, like, the water and sewer. I mean, you, those have to have receivables and your money starting throughout the year. But for like your general fund, most municipalities don't have earnings basis. Okay? Okay? So, I'm going to walk through the first two schedules which show the city out of long-term perspective. And, you know, this represents your assets, both short-term and long-term, your liabilities, short-term and long-term, net position. And, you know, when you look at this screen, you can see, geez, we've got a lot of assets in that position. And really, the majority of this relates to investment that we've made in our infrastructure. Okay? Our water plan, our sewer plan, our roads, that's really driving our assets and liabilities in that position. Okay? So, out of a hundred and twelve million dollars of assets, ninety-two million dollars is fixed assets. And that's basically the cost that we've incurred less depreciation on of assets. Liabilities, out of the fifty-nine million, we have about forty-seven million of debt associated with those improvements. And so, net position, yeah, we have a lot in that position. Fifty-three million dollars, about forty-nine million of that is almost like equity that you would have in your home, kind of like equity that we have in our infrastructure. Okay? So, then you get to the statement of activities, again, long-term perspective. It's not, this isn't really how you budget on a year-to-year basis, it's more looking at the long-term perspective. So, included in expenses is like depreciation of the capital infrastructure that we have. And when you look at this page, a couple of things to bring to your attention. First off, you can see expenses. Expenses are up about five percent or about 1.2 million. Okay? Of that 1.2 million dollar increase, about half of that is just reporting on a long-term model versus short-term model. What does that mean? Well, half of that increase is made up of depreciation going up about $300,000 and about $300,000 of an increase in pension reporting. Okay? Depreciation's up because, geez, we now have a sewer plant that's online, now operating, we're starting to appreciate that. And so, that's, again, half of that increase in our expenditures in the current year. The other thing to point out on this page is you can see the change in net position fluctuating on a year-to-year basis. Well, the big driver of that change in net position is a particular item in program rather than called capital grants. Okay? You receive, over the years, money that specifically paid to the city to help offset some of the infrastructure costs that we have in the way of capital grants. That gets reported as revenue, but then when you pay for the bills related to the infrastructure, it's recognized as an asset. So, it creates change in net position that's positive. And on a previous page when we saw equity, well, some of that equity is because we can't allow the infrastructure paid for via grant money rather than from sources of revenue that was brought in by the city. Okay? If I take out all that capital activity, in the current year, you would have had a small deficit of about $500,000. And in the previous three years, you were basically going to use from a long-term perspective. Okay? Just give you a little perspective without considering the capital requirements. Okay? So, the next couple of slides, I think, are more accustomed to what you're, you know, when you talk, you're talking more upon financial statement, short-term, general fund, water fund, sewer fund. Again, it's, it's not cash, but it's close to being on a cash basis presentation. And you can see, you know, for the most part, in the current year, which is the orange, we had a little bit of an increase in assets, our liabilities were about the same. So, in the current year, we had about $300,000 increase in our general fund, fund difference. Okay? So, how does that, you know, what does that mean? Well, I think this is a good perspective. That middle column, assigned fund balance, what that means is, if you're going to use fund balance to help balance your budget, it's considered to be assigned. And so, you can see, in the eighteen year and the nineteen year, there's nothing in that column. That means if you were to look at the eighteen, nineteen budget, and if you were to look at the nineteen, twenty budget, it's basically a balance budget. The revenue that you're expecting to bring into the city is going to be enough to meet your expenditures. Okay? So, for eighteen, nineteen, you had an increase of 318,000 and you had a balance budget. So, you were better than budget by about 318,000 dollars. Okay? Your unassigned fund balance is basically everything left over. So, if you were to liquidate your assets, pay your current liabilities, you'd have fund balance left, and this would be fund balance that we didn't connect to. And that number, coincidentally, is right at fifteen percent, which is kind of what your policy is, to kind of keep that at fifteen percent. So, here's a nice chart of the city's revenue over a five-year period. And you can see, in the current year, it was up about $500,000. And that increase was really real estate taxes and now property taxes, which is your sales tax. Those two items drove the increase in the total revenue during the year. Okay? When you look at revenue over that five-year period, you can see how flat it's been. Okay? Not a lot of growth in revenue. Expenditures. So, in the current year, we had about a $300,000 decrease in expenses. And really, that's made up of a couple of things. First of all, the operating transferred out is actually down by $500,000. Remember, last year, we took some of our fund balance and we transferred it over to the capital to help pay for this litigation. That was about 400, I think it was 430,000 dollars. Okay? So, that expense is down. And then your public safety, transportation, and culture and recreation were all up about $40,000. Okay? Public safety, basically even, your police and fire road, both up about $40,000. Transportation was up due to the resurfacing of the roads was up. And then culture and recreation was due to some repairs to the stadium. And then also, we had some additional cost for playgrounds. Okay? So, the net impact is, you know, our fund balance at the end of May 31st, 2019 was about 2.7 million. Five years ago was about 3.2 million. Water fund. Well, in the water fund, we had a little bit of a decrease in our equity to the tune of about $300,000. And so, what happened? Our revenue was flat. No change in revenue, no idea. You actually had a little bit of an increase in your water rates, and that increase was offset by a decrease in consumption. Okay? So, the net impact was really no change in revenue. Expenditures were up about $265,000. Most of that increase was that you had a couple of projects, most significantly, the Washington Street Water Project, which was about $140,000 in 2019. You also had some water pipes that broke, that cost, that had to be repaired. Those two items basically accounted for your increase in home community services. Okay? Transfers, they were up as well. Last year, there was a transfer from the water fund, again, to help pay for the litigation of about $120,000. In the current year, that transfer was $200,000 to help pay for the Starbucks pump, which was approximately $200,000. Okay? So, when you look at, you know, what's our equity over that period of time, back in 2014, you had about $840,000 of equity. At the end of 2019, just over $700,000. Again, I think on, on this slide, we're also kind of showing you, you know, what does operations look if we didn't make any transfers in the capital? And that's kind of represented in the broken green line. Okay? So, again, last year, the difference between the blue and the green was a transfer for the litigation. This year, it was a transfer to the Starbucks pump station. Back in 2014, I think we transferred 250,000 from the water fund to the north community Sewer fund. So, similar to the water fund, our sewer fund had about a $200,000, just under $200,000 decrease. Our total equity in the sewer fund is about 2.3 million dollars. That's a pretty healthy fund balance that represents about 55% of your budget. Okay? I mentioned in the general fund, it was about 15 or 16%. I think the water fund was about 18% of your total budget. Okay? So, as far as where we're sitting at each fund, certainly the sewer fund, we have the most significant set of, set aside for future. Revenue, pretty flat, was up about $85,000. Most of the increase was in intergovernmental charges, that's the charges that we have to ALEO. And so, that was up in 2019 versus 2018. Expenditures were up 225,000. You can see, most of that increase was in the home and community services. What fueled that was, every year, we kind of have committed to spending money on this lining project because there's an order of consent by the EEC. And I think you kind of committed to about $250,000 annually to put your budget. Well, this year, we did about $350,000 of costs associated with that lining project. And talking to Bob about it, you know, I think you have a couple of things that you're doing to kind of meet this order of consent. You're trying to identify areas where you think there's issues throughout the city and addressing those with that budget and amount. And at any time, you have a road project and you have to open up the road and, you know, maybe get under the ground, it's an opportunity to also see if there's a need for line, line of traffic as well. Okay? So, and again, transfers out. Last year, there was a transfer of about $95,000 to help pay the litigation. This year, there was no change, no need for change in our schedule. Okay? And so, again, you look at your equity, seeing sewer fund has grown significantly. But again, this is a fund that now you have the sewer plenty at hand. You now have debt associated with that sewer project. And you also have this order of consent where you're needing to spend money to help meet the conditions of that order. Okay? So, you have some needs with respect to that 200,000, which are. Okay? So, that's kind of financially, I mean, when I, when you kind of look at it overall from a financial perspective, you know, I'm, you know, I would particularly kind of summarize it by saying, we operated on an 18, 19 dollar cost basis. We provided services at the house. If you took your general fund, your water fund, your sewer fund, and included that service fund, and took all those surpluses or deficits, you'd have an overall deficit of $200,000 out of about $28 million of activity. Basically, we kind of provided services, we didn't add to our surpluses, we didn't take away from our services, we basically provided the services. Any questions?
No. I mean, I, I think, I think that was mainly our intention, was, was from a budgetary standpoint to break in.
Drop and roll.
So, I, I think that's, all in all, I think that's good news. It is a testament to how effective, certainly, the employees and, and the department has managed their operations, but that's, that's pretty incredible. That's a very good position to be in, I think, compared to maybe where, where the city was four years ago. So, yeah.
That's good.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Five, five years on the council, never spilled my water once, and when I do it, it's a doozy.
You got that going?
Yeah, I did. I did. Yeah?
You're going to get this back, so.
I'm going to keep it. I was talking about the SLR box on the floor. Can, can we ask the mayor? You want to hold it up, Paul? We should, we should ask that we increase George's paper towel budget for something more absorbent, like brownie.
Those are the worst paper towel covers, you know, we deal with that for a single day.
They don't, they don't.
No, they just pull out.
Get a wipe? Which we will.
We're going to go into general fund for you, David, one paper towel, better ones. I'm just smearing water around.
John, Nate, you guys good?
Yeah. It's good? Lot of water. Just getting out of water. Yeah. Okay, good evening. I'll call to Order Committee, the whole, for Tuesday, March 10th. Let the record show that all committee members are present. Item one on our agenda is PL 1520 by Mayor Aleo to establish standard workdays pursuant to New York State Local Retirement Regulation 315.4. Mayor?
Let's see. This is required by the state of New York retirement system that we have a set number of hours for each employee for the standard workday. So, this is like cleaning that up and getting it into the state for the policy that we have.
Yeah, pretty much an annual thing that we do every year.
Yes.
Yeah. Anybody have any questions or comments? Okay. Seeing none, would someone like to sponsor? Sponsored by Alderman Witt. Do I have a second? Second by Alderman Anastasia. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, 1520 is approved and will be referred to tonight's regular meeting. Item two on our agenda is PL 1620 by Alderman Crawford to authorize the transfer of $24,000 from the general fund contingency to line 3650.447, demolition of unsafe buildings for funding associated with the demolition of the city-owned properties located at 1013 Washington Street and 303 Elm Street. Alderman Crawford?
Thank you, Paul. This was the issue that we brought up and discussed last week during committees. I, the council had asked the mayor, city attorney, as well as code enforcement at the time, to reach out and see how quickly they could receive some bids for the demolition of those properties, seeing that there is a particular company in town that's given us pretty competitive bids on the demolition of the unsafe structure on Buffalo Street. We, I appreciate it, Bill, they were able to receive some bids back. Bill, would you care to address, I did send that in an email to the council, but I don't want to throw you on the spot. Do you happen to have the numbers?
I have it here, yes. Okay, so, we're talking about 1013 Washington. We got a bid.
Uh, seeing that there is a, a particular company in town that's given us a pretty competitive bids on, uh, the demolition of the unsafe structure on Buffalo Street. Uh, we, uh, I appreciate it, Bill, uh, they were able to, uh, receive some bids back. Bill, would you care to, uh, address, I, I did send that in an email to the council, but it, I don't want to throw you on the spot. Do you happen to have the numbers?
I have it here, yes. Okay, so we're talking about, uh, ten thirteen Washington. We got a bid of nineteen thousand three hundred. And that would be, uh, removal, then, uh, let's see. That's a, uh, yeah, removal and then clean it up. And then, uh, three oh three East Elm Street, that's eighteen thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Now, just then, remove and clean up the, uh, the area.
So, um, thank you, Bill. Uh, again, these are the two remaining white houses that we asked the county for last year. Uh, you know, first of all, just accommodation goes to the council for pursuing, uh, fighting blight in our, our neighborhoods. Um, so this is asking to appropriate, uh, twenty-four thousand from the general fund contingency. We do have approximately fourteen thousand, um, in our, remaining in our demolition line item. Um, and so in order to take advantage of, of these competitive prices, um, we need to transfer twenty-four thousand.
So I think it's a great idea, obviously, uh, you know, if we're going to spend contingency, uh, monies, um, uh, this is a hell of a place to, to spend it, so, um, especially the deal we're getting, I think it's a good idea.
Thanks.
Yep, I'm with you, John.
Uh, great, thank you, Paul. Um, I think from past precedents, we've seen how expensive it can be on some of these demolitions. And, uh, for what it's worth, uh, the company was over there on Buffalo Street today. Uh, they've done a knock-up job, I don't know if Bill or if, uh, the fire chief, I, I see they were putting, um, you know, I think, um, some hay down, they were leveling, it, uh, it looks, it looks phenomenal. So I think they do quality work, uh, and it's a heck of a price, anything under twenty-five thousand to knock down one of these structures is, as good of a deal I think as we're going to get, so.
What was the general fund contingency, uh, amount at this point again, too? I know we just talked about it, I don't remember.
Right.
So it's two hundred thousand plus, so it's two hundred and twenty-four thousand about?
Right now.
Okay. And that's out of a budget of two fifty, right?
Two thirty.
Two thirty, okay. Okay. And that, that would be contingency that would expect to last us through May thirty-first, which is.
One would hope.
One would hope, right.
And I, I did reach out, Paul, and ask Bill, and, and he didn't think there was anything out of the norm that we would need for that, that contingency for, right? Bill, you thought that was a fair.
I think that's, uh, yeah, this is, this is a, this is a, a good deal, you know, let's do it to prices and it's, uh, we've been, we've been talking about these houses and we had the opportunity to take two of them down now at a reasonable price. And, uh, I think it's a good thing to do.
Great.
The question is going to recruit that some of that money back to Buffalo, if you actually.
Next.
Well, I'd be happy, never mind, not even going to go there. We're going to get it back, yeah. Okay, John, any other, any other questions for John, or in general? Okay, seeing none, John, would you like to sponsor?
Yes, please, Paul.
Uh, I will second, do I, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, uh, sixteen twenty is approved and will be referred to tonight's regular meeting. Uh, item three is adjournment, I will make a motion to adjourn, uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Crawford, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Adjourn. Okay, I will call to order the regular meeting of the common council for Tuesday, March tenth. Will the clerk please call the roll? Alderman Witt?
Here.
Alderman Panis?
Here.
Alderman Doughty?
Here.
Alderman Crawford?
Here.
Alderman Smith?
Here.
Alderman Anastasia?
Here.
Alderman Gonzalez? Here. Please rise for the invocation.
Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to gather here tonight. May everything we do begin with your inspiration and continue with your help. We ask for guidance throughout this meeting. We ask, um, that all our thoughts and actions would reflect your holy will. And that would grant us the grace to love you and our neighbors. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, and infinite.
Okay, reading, correcting, and approval of the minutes of the previous regular meeting.
The regular meeting of the Ollien Common Council was held on Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty at seven P M. Present, Alderman Gonzalez, Alderman Witt, Alderman Panis, Alderman Doughty, Alderman Crawford, and Alderman Anastasia.
Okay, uh, I will make a motion to approve the minutes, uh, from the previous meeting, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Doughty, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. Uh, committee reports and unfinished council business.
We have none.
Okay, communications from the mayor.
Thank you, Paul. I would just see, uh, a proclamation to read and then they presented the key to the city to James Snyder Senior.
Special proclamation from, to recognize, um, James J. Snyder Senior. Whereas, Jim J. Snyder Senior has, has been a public servant representing the city of Ollien and the Sione region for well over forty years. Whereas, in addition to serving of this Ollien Common Council and the Ollien Plot Planning Board, Mr. Snyder served on Cataragus County Legislature for thirty-nine years and was chairman for thirteen years. Whereas, Mr. Snyder brought recognition and ha- and honor to our region by serving as president of National Association of Counties, as president of the New York State Association of Counties, and as special assistant of President George H. W. Bush. Whereas, his leadership, his legislative endeavors, and his personal initi- initiatives has had a significant impact on our great city of Ollien. Whereas, his help to secure, uh, the Cataragus County Campers of Jamestown Community College for downtown Ollien. Whereas, he helped our community to get funding to restore Rattler Stadium and build the Lincoln Square facility in Lincoln Park. Whereas, James J. Snyder Senior has always been a dedicated leader and a strong supporter of the city of Ollien. Whereas, therefore, I, William J. Eliot, mayor of the city of Ollien, on this day, the tenth March in the year twenty twenty, do hereby recognize James J. Snyder Senior. And furthermore, on behalf of the common council, I extend our appreciation for his many years of service to our community. His contribution of Ollien is significant. And accordingly, I hereby present a key to the city of Ollien, New York, to James J. Snyder Senior.
I am honored to present this key to Jim Snyder Senior for his dedication to the, not only the city of Ollien, of Cataragus County, New York State, and the United States. Jim is a, everybody knows, Jim is a Syracuse lover, uh, but he's quite a Bonner fan also. He was honored here the last day at St. Bonaventure, or he was recognized, I'll say that. I had the privilege of working for Jim, uh, working with Jim, six years on the Cataragus County Legislature. And, uh, what he taught me, uh, about the political arena, I'll never forget, so. Jim, I thank you, thank for being my friend, and, uh, on behalf of the city, I thank you for what you have done.
Thank you, Mayor.
You get to say whatever you want. Keep it within twenty minutes, okay?
Thank you, Mayor, I don't want to put my back on anybody, I can avoid it, but, uh, I appreciate it. It really is symbolic and I appreciate it. Uh, is, I have to ask a question, is there anybody on the council who was born before nineteen sixty-two?
Yeah.
But I'll disqualify, but I'll disqualify too much.
You're fifty, I was born fifty-two, so.
Fifty-two, because I started my career, my political career that is, as an alderman, uh, over, and back then it was the tenth ward. We had eleven wards back then in nineteen sixty-two. And I, we had eleven wards and I represented the tenth ward, which is Warbinville Hospital, Front Street, Prospect. And this generally, but it's now known as Warbinville, I guess. But that was, if you do the math, that was nineteen sixty-two, that's almost sixty years ago. And I was one of you guys sitting here, and I was thinking about the, uh, in fact, David's father, I think, served, that served with Dave's father. The big issue back at that time was building, it just was built, and it was a bloodbath on the city council with eleven aldermen fighting and screaming over building this, what you see now is a new building. It was an old school building sitting here, one time they tore it down, and it was a bloodbath. And, uh, and by the time I got on the council, the, the big issue at the time was whether we should put lights around the outside of the building. And the vote was like, back then, six to five or whatever it was after months of arguing and screaming. So these lights you see on the outside of the building now, I don't know if they work anymore, but, uh, I voted for those lights, that was my. That was my only accomplishment. I would also like to, uh, introduce my beautiful wife, Paula, I don't know if, how many, most people know Paula. Paula is the, uh, runs our campus, J C C campus here in Ollien. And she's, uh, breathing some life and some energy into the campus. Paula is great daddy with it, and you can see I, wherever I go, I have a college fellow being around. We have some Bon- mixture of Bonner students, grandkids, uh, relatives, friends, but anyway. The light is around here at night, it's been one of the, and, uh, this, I get to tell you guys, it, it, there is life after politics. It's sort of nice to have my phone not ringing. I can remember it once as an alderman getting a call, it was a possum on some lady's porch. And that's what you guys deal with. We don't deal with that at all, in Little Valley, we don't deal with that. But I had a great, I had a great career, it all started right here, from the tier to the city, to the council, to the state, and then being president of National Association of Counties, and ended up working for President Bush in the White House, so. Uh, and then back to the county management section, so I did full circle, it was a great, great run, great tour. We have a lot of friends, I miss my friends in Little Valley, but I don't miss, I just put in the time. Thank you, Billy, so much for this, I appreciate it. And thank, I also want to commend each one of you, and I mean this sincerely. It takes a certain amount of guts to throw your name in a public ring, and I commend all of you. I don't know what your politics are, because I haven't been that close to the city, but I commend each of you for having the guts to throw your hat in the ring. Knowing you might win and you might lose, and we've all been there, I know the words to both those songs.
Yep.
Up on the lose, but, uh, this, when you throw your hat in the ring, you accept that as part of the outcome and you have to accept it and move on with your life and get in the next ring. But I commend you for it, except people do it, most people can't do it, and I commend you all for having the guts to do it. Billy, thank you, and, um, the buck with your reading tonight. Thank you.
Now, there's one, one little caveat here tonight is that, uh, uh, next Saturday night, I'm presenting key to the city to another person, so I'll stop by and pick that up.
We'll need to clean, Bill.
The building would also be on the lock.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Which door does that go into? Phil, anything else?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay. Uh, miscellaneous communications.
We have none.
City official reports?
Monthly report of the city auditor, month ended, February twenty twenty. Quarterly report of the city auditor, nine months ended, February twenty-ninth, twenty twenty.
Uh, proposed legislations and referrals.
P L fifteen dash twenty by Mayor Eliot, referred to committee of the whole Tuesday, March tenth, twenty twenty by council president. P L sixteen dash twenty by Alderman Crawford, referred to committee of the whole Tuesday, March tenth, twenty twenty by council president. P L seventeen dash twenty by Alderman Anastasia, referred to committee of the whole Tuesday, March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty by council president.
Okay, before we, uh, open the public comment section, I'd first like to offer an opportunity. Anyone on the council would like to make a comment, please do so at this time.
Paul, I'd like to make a comment.
Yep, Alderman Smith?
There's no way I can gracefully say this, so I'm just going to die right in. After eight years on this council, due to, uh, personal circumstances largely unforeseen, uh, I will be resigning tonight, uh, in fact, I mean, yeah. Resigning from this council is not, uh, is a decision I made lightly, I've agonized over it. Uh, but it's something I don't want to do, but at this time, it's something I have to do. Uh, before I say goodnight to everyone, I'd like to say a few things. Uh, first, I'd like to thank the numbers of this council, uh, pleasant numbers and past numbers. Uh, it's been a pleasure serving the, everyone here, uh, and I make good friendships with everyone, I appreciate it. Uh, I would like to thank the department heads and all city employees in under position, uh, over these eight years. Uh, they've helped me numerous times, addressing people's concerns and solving problems, uh, and I appreciate it. And this city really, uh, has its employees under a very pressure, yeah. I'd like to thank Mayor Eliot and his wife Abby, they're great people, uh, Bill has sent hours serving him, and I'm a lot for him, and I appreciate everything, and Ollien fucking heaven. I want to thank my wife, Teresa, uh, the last eight years have been a journey for me and it's been a journey for our family. You might like to send that back? I'm going to sign the word, I'm not going to, I appreciate that. And lastly, I want to thank the people of Ollien, specifically, weren't, weren't six, uh, for having confidence in me and supporting me and letting me be a representative. It was a big responsibility, I was humbled and honored to serve in this position. So, thank you, people of Ollien. With that said, I wish everyone had good luck, and God bless. I appreciate that, everyone, but I, I did not sort of fly on Jim. But I may return, uh, but thank you, everyone, for your support and your friendship, it's very much appreciated. And, uh, I don't want to be rude, but since, since I am resigned and I don't have any voting authority, I am not going to stay for the rest of me. Thank you, everyone, I'll see you later.
Okay, does anyone else on the, it's kind of a tough act to follow. Uh, does anyone else on the council have?
Okay, so, uh, we did just discuss this in committee the whole. Uh, any comments, questions, or concerns? Okay, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Doughty?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
Okay, I will make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Witt, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Adjourn.